Rosemary is traveling and will not be with us today. I wanted to let everyone know that. The first thing we will do is start off with the African American Cultural Center. And Dr. Amelia Ross Hammond has a presentation here. And Dave, do you have anything to add?
No, I'm just pleased to see our former council lady back and welcome all her compatriots and to have her present today.
Amelia, we're glad to have you, ma'am.
Good afternoon to everyone.
Good afternoon.
Mayor, vice mayor, and council members, it's good to see you.
Why do you look so much younger?
Lack of stress. Lack of stress.
Thank you.
And that came from Barbara.
We have the white hair on this end of the table.
It's nice to have you here.
Thank you. What I would like to start is first acknowledge the city and the city managers for giving us this opportunity. And also, I couldn't go any further without Vice Mayor Jones, who went place to place with me in the rain and the storm and flood until we found somewhere to meet as dedication. So I want to acknowledge those before I get started. As you know, we started this in 2015, and by October, City Council unanimously conveyed the land to the African American Cultural Center, and I thank you. Today, we have a few of our members here with us. From our executive board to the right, we have Dr. Linda Bright. We also have our treasurer, Jim Banks. And we have, as I told you, this comes from in the community. So not only the executive board, we have an honorary board, and we also have a community advisory committee. And out of that group, since some people started keeling over, we said, we need to get started. So we have an oral history committee. Edna Henrys and all of them are there. But we have two co-chairs who have history themselves. We have Margie Caulfield, if you wave her hand. She's the daughter of Carlos Wilson, the famous one who welcomed people in at the Cavalier. And one of the things I told Bruce Thompson when he came up-
He kept me out of trouble many a time.
So when he talked about doing that Cavalier, I asked him if he's going to pull up some history. He promised me. And then last year, he brought me in, and he has a whole draw of all this history. You haven't seen that yet, just to show he is a person of his word. And then also, we have Becky Livis, whose father was Honorable John Perry, the first African American councilman on this council. So we're in good hands, and we're working through. So quickly, kind of scan through, if you'll follow me along, we'll go ahead. This is our, if you go back a minute, our executive board. And we're still working on growing more people. Well, that's not our executive board. Where are they hiding? Back one page? Do you have that page?
This is the, this is the next page.
Oh, oh. Okay. Well, on this page, you see our vision. I hope you have everything look correct. Vision, mission, and goals. And so that we will be a regional leader in generating historical and cultural contexts through programs. And our mission to collect, reserve, and so forth. As you can see along the bottom, some of them you'll recognize in the community. We have a school board member there, people from Burton Station, people from Newsome, Edna Henrys from C-TAC, and we can keep going, as well as some of the board members. Okay, turn. All right. I don't know, we should, we have a different one. But anyway, the property, um, did I send you this? Well, if you follow in your book, I will go from there, because I may have sent the wrong part. But the property is right on the corner of Hampshire and Newtown. So if you're going along that stretch, and you can only make a right to go to Betty F. Williams, to go to Williams Farm, you cannot make a left. So it's about 4.83 acres of land. And there is a basketball court, which is used a whole lot. And we promised the community to still keep that basketball court. And we heard it will be refurbished, thanks to Vice Mayor. Okay. Now, we've all the way jumped into, if you turn the next page, I'll go from what I have here. What we did was to study. We wanted to find out certain things about it. Our consultants, we asked them, is there sufficient demand for potential audiences? Is there demand on the part of users and artists and art organizations and educators and civic groups? Do we have places where it's neat and affordable for them? We also asked what's wrong with the facilities that we have right now? And finally, what is good about this project? And we felt it was important that we have a project like this to highlight certain things. Our consultants was web management, and we also have two young African Americans from Hanbury and Evans. So in those, we found out that yes, we do have an audience. You can see that in this area, in the market between 2000 and 2010, we had 32% in that region. We also have a large growth of young people in our area. In our region, we have about 8% growth, whereas on a national level, you have only 4%. And on the regional area, only about 2%. So, and these are the millennials, the younger people. And we have a decline in some of the adults. So it's important that we appeal to this group. As we go further along, one thing special about Virginia Beach, we have more affluent, educated young people than the rest of our immediate region. And that's important, because if they are educated, they will be part of the arts. So this center will be a place that will have growth and appeal to all people in the community. Diversity is beauty and strength. And it's grounded in values, culture, tradition, heritage, and history. We want to have shared inclusiveness, a community for all. Most important, it should be family oriented. As you know, many of the young people come home, the parents are out working. So this is an opportunity to partner also with the school system, as one of our groups. And with the school system, I've already put in to speak with Superintendent Spence, and we'll talk about how we can connect in any way for operating budgets and so forth. We want to have a center that's vibrant, that at the same time you go, there may be a jazz performance going on in one place, there will be something going on outside, and also poetry, storytelling, basket weaving, cooking, because you know, cooking is very important. And a lot of our young people don't learn some of this culture. So the main thing is to get them exposed to what happens in the African American community to learn, just as we learn much about all other cultures. And one very important thing that's going to help us, and that city manager asked us for, is to have a performer budget, which you're looking at on the screen. As you can see, we have divided it. There's earned, and I'll find that page if you turn all the way to page, if I can get you through. Somehow, I clicked on the wrong PowerPoint and showed something that's older. But we do have set up our performer budget. We have the earned income, which is the $336,000. We have the contributed income, it's about $352,000, for a total income of $688,000. We have operating budget, as you can see across, for $690,000. And out of all of this, we have to have something that sustain us. And it will take about $350,000 to sustain it each year. And if you notice, when you get to year four, it jumps, because what we plan to do is do it in two phases. The first would be the phase that has sharing and showing, that will have different events going on. And then we'll also have gathering, learning, teaching, and so forth in that phase. In the second phase, we will have theater. And in that theater, we'll have like about 250 seatings. And we'll also have lots of flexibility. It's important that this is not static, but an active, engaging center. We plan, even with that theater, to have the flexible flooring. I don't know if you have a picture of that at all to see. No, okay. So we'll just stay right where we are. But we have flexible seating that can collapse and go flat, so it can be used as a multipurpose room. We had a lovely picture you will see in your book, and I'll show that to you as we go back, because we just have a very brief one on this page. And there was one we saw, if you go on to page 18, you will see one. There's one in Fayetteville, Indiana, that has that flexible. And up with the woodwork, as well on the bottom of that, we want to be environmentally friendly, so kids can also learn about agriculture. And this is where that connection with the school will help. Okay. We also have a page that you all can see on page 19 and 20, if you follow me right there. That's where we did the physical spaces and plotted out each thing. It costs about $450,000, $450 per square foot. So what happens is, in our first phase, we run as close to $15,000. And the second phase, which has all the technology, where we have teams do digital media and so forth, and recording, it will run as about $25,000. So we're looking at $35,000 for all sets. We'll do the first half, which will take us capital campaign starting in the spring, hopefully groundbreaking by the end of 2018 to start, and then by 2020 to have the building up, and by 2022 to have the second phase in place. So that's a bit about our capital budget. Now, if you look on this one, since we have that page up here, you can see that Phase One, oh boy, Phase One has a green roof. The environmental was super leaf silver. And around the corners, we have the outdoor event places. So even though this is the teaching, learning, and great multipurpose room, we'll still have outdoor events going on. We have enough parking along here, and if there's something overflow, we have the group right over here, which is an early childhood, who are very happy about something coming up that they can visit. And notice, we continue to keep some wooded green space in there. In the second half, you can see where it's joined right up at the top, the outdoor event areas over on this side. We still have the entry, which is already there and coming through. And of course, our basketball court. And we'll have buffer and hidden fencing along there, and most people will come through on this side for their events. So you can see it's prominent visibility, and this is from Diamond Springs coming into Newtown Road. On the other end, you have the new exchange for 264. And we hope to be able to have markers, historic markers along either end. And as you know, Burton Station is not far away, so you have population. And this will be a job creation as well through that, whether it's direct or indirect. Okay. I want to read you two statements before we go on. One which was written by our architects, the guys who inspired about the idea, and is in your book on pages 27 and 28. They wrote that this will be areas of protection. Built identity, the deliberate shaping, forming, and texturing of a constructed space is central to the commonality, security, and cohesive of a people. At the heart of the built Liberian tradition is the Palavahut. It stands as a symbol of built identity and community, and place of bringing people together in likeness and safety. Safety is very important for our young people, and this is somewhere they can come after school. We'll have programs even on Saturdays that they will be able to come and use that. And will be structured programs in collaboration. As a symbol of the past, the AACC is a modern day style of a Palavahut, embracing African American culture shaped in the form of community, fostering education, texture in the pattern of culture. And the oral transmission section says, "The vocal passage of history through generations passed is a foundational element in the education of one's community and culture. The building's architecture can be the built embodiment of that oral memory, told through the building walls and surfaces, exploring the possibilities of light and shadows, graphics, and technology. These stories can be featured in minutes in spaces that bring people together." Our operating goals is to highlight African American heritage and culture in the region for the benefit of all African Americans and all populations, so they can learn. Provide affordable access to well-equipped performance area. Support the local businesses, governments, and citizens. Contribute to the economic vitality of Virginia Beach and the wider region with active facilities that drive economic and community development, using a sustainable business model. And this is important, because we are partnering with several groups. One group is Yale University. They have heard about us, and they're keeping track of what we're doing, and they hope to come when we do their capital campaign kickoff, because they were the first African American Cultural Center at a university from 1969. And Stanford and several others have modeled. So they are willing to work, they are willing to share their model and how they have sustained that far. And I think that is a positive move. So we're reaching out also to Atlanta. We have someone on the oral history through Margie, who is coming from the National Museum of African American History and Culture. So we have been working like ducks quietly, but pedaling under. And the governance will stress the importance of developing these strong partnerships. One of our strongest partners, of course, is the City of Virginia Beach. This is a unique private-public partnership. Already, the city makes sure the easement, the landscaping is all well-kept. And that is important. And we plan to do other initiatives with the city. The school district, as I mentioned to you, will be key. The regional colleges and facilities and programs will come in. We've already looked at our performer budget. I will quickly go to the economic impacts. And there are a few. The input, local expenditures for constructions, the output of sales, earnings, and jobs created through all of that, and looking at 175. Ongoing annual impacts on operation, where we have the soft sales of input, output sales, earnings, job created annually, from that will be about five. And the audience pending. The input for by year four, $676,520. Output for sales, $1,062,971. The earnings, $225,798. And jobs created annually will be about eight. So this total, we're looking at about 13 in this part of economic development on jobs created annually. And we're looking not only at the quantitative, but the qualitative. This center will have additional impacts. It will project to be a catalytic project for the neighborhood and city, kicking off growth and development throughout the area. The center could play a role in corporate recruitment, attracting progressive and diverse communities, workers and residents to Virginia Beach. The center could be an important aspect of developing more tourism, attracting African Americans and others from throughout the region. And in your book, you will see where we outline the critical pathways on pages 35 and 36. And then we go over to the case statement, which I'll read. "The first African American Cultural Center has been proposed to tell the story of African Americans in Virginia Beach and the Hampton Roads region, with a 4.83 acre site along Newtown Road identified and donated to the project by the City of Virginia Beach. This will be a place that bring people together, fostering community, providing education, and celebrating African American history and culture in the region. The center will also provide much-needed facilities for the local community, and will further enhance the Virginia Beach 2030 Arts Plan for a more culturally diverse community." Some of you will remember when they said about that plan, they mentioned that the plan and the facilities that we have does not really reflect the diversity. We have people from all over, from military, international, and this will be an opportunity for them to come and learn. "The center will be sustained with an appropriate achievable mix of earned and contributed income." For those reasons, the African American Cultural Center is a project worthy of support. Now, may I see what you have on the next page? Okay. If you pull this a little bit closer up, so you can see. This is the first phase. We're going to have a wall of meanings. If you can look carefully, you will see all the different words that are all part of it. Kind of almost a maze design that will go around that part. If you bring that back again, you can see some of the words. Something like a shape around. The center will be like a drum. If you know, the talking drum sends messages. And if you can see, for the people looking in, and at night, it will light up inside, so you can see the different words, shaping, forming, connecting, collaborating, all the way around. So we'll have that wall of meaning. And then it picks up over here to the amphitheater section. Okay. Just quickly, we're going to go on to next steps. One of the things we plan to do as we prepare for this is the Office of Cultural Affairs have contacted us, and they're going to put one of those large public arts on the site while we're waiting, preparing, you know, getting our funding together, so that it will sit there. And on the top of it, something as large, as you can see, is the size of a man in a size. And they're doing a call for artists, local and regional. They have about $20,000, and they're going to put that up, fix that really neat. And one of our board members says, "We hope we'll have lights that can highlight it, you know, at night, so you can see them." And it will say, "Future Home of the African American Cultural Center." That's one of our next steps. And Nina Gudell Salassa is in charge of this, and she will pass that out. She's gone to one of our community meetings, and soon, they will put out the proposal. Another step we're doing is we have a partnership with the Crashlin Museum. So February 3rd at 2:00, we will be doing a gallery talk, where I will share about what we're doing, and they have decided to go into the archives and pull up African American art collection. And that is big, because as you know, they are 210,000 square feet. And they are our largest group where they have those that we can get to meet, will be put on their site that we're doing this. So these are big steps for Virginia Beach. This will be a win-win for the city. And I really thank you all for giving us this chance. I thank web management. I thank the city manager, who I've worked closely with. I like to be methodical. So we're doing this step. We're now looking for a few more executive board members that reflect the city. We also are looking at having chair or lead campaign people. We want to have leads, we want to have naming rights, and I believe that's possible. We work towards it, we'll come back to you and let you know where we are. Thank you all so much for giving us the time. Do you have any questions?
We were here to wish you the very best. Any questions or comments?
I'd just like to say, this sounds like a great project, and I know how long you've been working on this, Amelia, and I thank you for continuing to spearhead this effort.
Thank you. And I also thank all the board members who have worked with me on this.
We wish everyone the best, and bring in the bucks. That's the next step.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Glad to have you here. The next thing will be the Minority Business Council Annual Report. And I gather that Emma will be making that presentation?
Actually, I'll be giving you just one or two words, as will Taylor. Emma had to unexpectedly leave, and so we'll reschedule Emma.
Okay.
But I didn't want to miss this opportunity to kind of give you some good news. I can't deliver as well as Emma can, but if you can pull up the slide, that's the one we talked about. There you go. I wanted to report that for fiscal '17, total minority expenditures in the city contracting, actual expenditures, was $20.4 million, 6.8% overall. So this is an increase from the prior years, and that includes prime payments, as well as documented subcontractor payments. Taylor Adams, the city's purchasing agent, will talk to you a little bit about some of the things that we've done this year that have resulted in this increase. And we're not going to steal any thunder from Emma, but wanted to at least talk about that. And also, I wanted to recognize Linda Bright, a member of the Minority Business Council, Keith Lee, a minority business coordinator with Purchasing Office, and Olivera Calentino, minority business coordinator. And who else have I got in here that I wanted to recognize?
Hopper was here.
Yeah, that's right. Ed Hopper is outside in the lobby, another member of the Minority Business Council.
Well, we thank everybody for the effort here. You know, we are really making some progress. Okay, Taylor, you're on, buddy.
Thank you, Mayor. We're very excited about the $20.4 million. You all will remember, last year, we gave you, we posted an all-time high for the city of $17.4 million, which was 6.56% of total city expenditures to minority, or, well, minority expenditures that were, or, excuse me, expenditures that were tracked through purchasing to minority vendors. So we are particularly excited to have grown on that number, both in dollar volume and as a percentage of contracts that are within the program. So 20.4 and 6.8%. The way that that happened, we first want to thank you all. We had, as part of your legislative packet, we requested that the General Assembly give us the ability to waive the pre-qualification requirement under the bond waiver, under the bond waiver construction statute. Now, you all will remember, the bond waiver construction statute exists because you all asked for it. And so after operating under that for a few years, we were able to, we found there was a potential tweak that was needed. Through your support, the General Assembly gave us that authority. We actually have two solicitations that will, that, one has been advertised, one will advertise in the next two weeks. We hope to have some good news to report on how those are performing first part of the year. We're continuing to debundle large annual services agreements into smaller job order contracts. This was, this provided two, or three nice contracts for us that were new. The two were to minority-owned businesses, one was to a woman-owned business. But basically, these are, these are three contracts for general construction services that are, that are half a million dollars each for three years. So it's one and a half million dollars worth of, worth of new volume that we anticipate we'll generate in each of the next three years. So we're particularly excited about that. We have continued to focus on strengthening our current, call it book of business or book of contracts, and making sure that we're, that our, that our existing minority-owned contractors are successful in having their contracts renewed. That happened to the tune of a half-million-dollar janitorial services contract, but also another $2.1 million in IT services for minority-owned contractors. So all told, it has been an exciting year for us. Like Patty, I don't want to steal any more of Emma's thunder, but-
Procurement Opportunity Committee.
But procure, oh, thank you. The Procurement Opportunity Committee is something we have talked to you all about before. We were, we were very excited to find out in April that the Procurement Opportunity Committee was recognized by the Alliance for Innovation as an outstanding achievement and local government innovation. So national award that our Minority Business Program was able to win. We went to Tulsa, received the trophy. And so, again, it was, it was an exciting day for us. But what that means is, since its inception, well, no, excuse me, in fiscal year '17, there were $2.7 million in new minority contracts that were generated through the Procurement Opportunity Committee. That group continues to meet once a month and is continuing to generate a steady result. So all in all, it has, it has been an exciting year for us.
Very good. I guess we'll have this presented at a different time?
We will schedule as soon as we can.
Thank you very much. Appreciate y'all's presentation. Any questions or comments? Yes, sir, Bobby?
Yeah, I just want to, you know, thank our staff, Taylor and Patty, Laverne, and everybody. This is a wonderful collaboration, and Rod, who is, we can't deal without. God bless you. This is a wonderful collaboration between the city, a group of people, the Minority Business Council, who have been wonderful to work with. It's been a wonderful collaboration, but also with the minority business community, which includes, you know, small women, veterans, disabled, and everything, in trying to do the right thing, to provide that level playing field that we all at this table strive for. And, you know, it's a wonderful collaboration, it's bearing fruit. We still got a ways to go, but I'll tell you what, I think we're moving the dial in the right direction, and for that, I give my sincere thanks.
Thank you all. Thank you, Bobby, for saying that. You're right on target. Thank you. All righty, we're now going to Sandbridge Beach Restoration. Dave?
Yes, sir.
Going to introduce Philip?
Yes, sir.
We've got...
Everybody knows Phillip.
We've got our Public Works Coastal Team coming in. Phil Roars will be our lead breeder, griefer. And this is moving an agenda forward. It looks like we're gonna be moving that forward without support from the feds, although we'll use them to help us deliver the project, so.
Well, thank you, Dave. Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. Today's...
Glad to have you.
Thank you. An informational briefing only. We're not asking for a decision today, but giving you an opportunity to gather some background and provide some input, with the promise that probably in January, we'll come back with a formal action. So this is a program update, oops, about Sandbridge Beach Replenishment. It has been highly successful. You see that we've done four beach replenishments, '98, '03, '07, and '13. And from a coastal engineering perspective, this is a wild success. We knew going into this project, just like at the Oceanfront, this is a long-term, beach erosion just continues and continues. And when we got into this game, one of the fundamental theories was, we'd have to keep it up. And indeed, we have, and we've made some great differences down at Sandbridge. Since Hurricane Isabel, we've avoided more than $80 million worth of damage by investing in this beach. And there were a bunch of reasons Sandbridge Community Value grew, including sanitary sewer and basic market forces. But growing from 200 million to 800 million in total assessed value since 1998 is quite a success story. And it's a project that's known nationally. We, this year, got an award from the American Shore and Beach Preservation Association. This is a group we've belonged to as a city since 1936. It's a best restored beach, and the things they consider exactly what this project delivers. Economic and ecological benefits to the community, short and long-term success. It has been a wild success. And acknowledging the challenges the community overcame during the course of the project, which there were many in the beginning. But we've made it, and we're happy to receive that award. It'll be issued this March up in Washington, the Capitol. More as background, but I wanna tell you that we take monitoring this beach and our resort beach very seriously. We, every six months, do a full survey of the beach, and then use digital terrain modeling and various statistical methods and so forth to track the performance of the project. It has performed really well. Just in brief, this is a cross-section, looking up the beach, if you would, from the side view. But what we had back before the project started was a very narrow, low beach, and we saw a lot of damage. I think we lost a total of 44 homes during about a decade leading up to 1998. The red line is what Congress authorized for federal cost sharing, a project that would provide protection against a limited storm event. And then what you see are two typical sections beyond that. This is the way it looked when we finished the project in 2013, our last replenishment. And now, through erosion, it's eroded back to approximately that line. And it's getting time again, you know, with the schedule that I laid out in '08, 1998, '03, '07, and '13, it's time for another replenishment. But this, this monitoring lets us know that for sure, and plan the appropriate volume. A lot of numbers here, and I apologize for that. I'll just say that during the eight months that led to our last survey, we had a huge recovery from the storm damage that we experienced in 2016. You see, we gained almost 300,000 cubic yards during the winter months. And that was mostly because we had such a damaged beach section, it was healing. But then, if you take a look at the whole period from our last replenishment until this last June, on average, the beach has lost almost 200,000 cubic yards a year. And this is really what we had known from the start. It's actually a pretty good number. We had always planned on about 300,000 cubic yards a year. We're seeing better performance than predicted. The last line says that there should be about, on average, 5.8 years of service life left, that is, before the beach erodes back to that congressionally authorized template. We never want to get there. We know the beach is eroding, you always wanna have sand out in front of it, and that's the average. When you take a look at a few sections, like at Toona Lane, the black line being our June 17 survey, with about 100 feet of beach left and an erosion rate of 25 feet a year, there are a few years from, from reaching design template, and we, again, don't wanna get there. Similar thing exists down at the very south end by Little Island. So this is really the meat of the presentation of the item for you to consider at some future meeting, cost sharing. The federal government most likely won't have money, but it's time to replenish the beach. So knowing that, we had briefed the Civic League back in April and September. To say they're supportive of a beach replenishment is, is an understatement. They're somewhat demanding it. If you recall, most of this money is their money in a special service district. They don't wanna get off that five-year cycle. They don't wanna let the beach get back to a point where they might be threatened by a major storm. So, so we have their support, and with the data I showed you and the statistics we performed, we think a 1.6 million cubic yard project is probably in order for 2018. And as mentioned, federal funding is almost certainly unavailable for a number of reasons. So, so we are proposing that, again, the city, through the SSD and TIF, pay 100% of this upcoming project in 2018. To initiate that, City Manager Hanson signed a letter out in September to the Corps, asking them formally to initiate the process of documenting how we can contribute funds and not make the federal government owe us money. That's, that's the key thing, is they have to make certain that we're willing to pay for it and not seek reimbursement. We have received their draft contributing funds agreement. Dana's already reviewed it. This is the document. We'll probably come back to you in January for your formal consideration. This would authorize the city manager to sign a cost sharing or local contributed funds agreement wherein we would spend 100% of the project money. Councilmember Wood, I'm happy to stop.
I was just asking.
Nevertheless, we are preparing the contract documents for bidding, and we've begun the environmental coordination. We have to consult with Fish and Wildlife and a number of other agencies every time we do one of these replenishments, with respect to turtles and other, other species of concern. But our plan is to advertise it, and this is kind of important for us. We're not playing the market, but we're trying to play the right hand here. The dredging industry that does beach replenishment is a very constrained, small industry. There's only three companies in the country that do the work. Florida has all three of those contractors all winter long. The summers, the ships are sitting idle in Norfolk Harbor. So getting, getting them to work in the summer is important for us. But we also wanna bid the project early enough that they can put it on their books. And we've heard this from them time and time again, if you want an August beach replenishment, don't ask us in June. They're already way booked up. So we wanna get on their calendar, on their dance card, and then execute in that later part of the summer. That's important, too, because of turtle restrictions. There's a narrow window between industry availability and when we're allowed to do beach replenishment to protect the turtles. So we're trying to capture that window. So just to summarize, we last replenished in '13, and it's time again to consider doing it. The project is performing extremely well, getting national attention. We're proposing a project with up to $21.5 million budget. We really do not expect to spend that kind of money. We think it'll come in in '18 or less. But the Corps of Engineers, being our partner, wanting us to sign a local contributed funds agreement, they wanna make sure it's covered. But we're pretty comfortable it'll come in less than that. All those funds are available. They've already been appropriated. The majority of it is special service district money. Again, we'll probably come back to you in January for a formal action to approve that cost sharing agreement. And finally, that we're scheduled to start in the middle, late summer. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions. Jim Wood.
So two questions. One, what is the balance in that SSD?
You're thinking what I'm thinking, I was asking the same thing. You know, I can get back to you, Mr. Wood. There's $22.5 million currently appropriated in the Sandbridge Beach replenishment accounts. However, there is additional funds that are yet unappropriated in the special service district revenue accounts. They're appropriated annually, so there's actually a larger pool of money than, than the $22.5.
That's how I checked, a couple months ago, it was north of $36 million.
Yes, sir.
That should be a number you should keep in mind.
You want two? Correct. I thought you wanted to keep two. Correct. Two replenishment cycles, and I think we're still there.
Right, so then, my next question. So it's the source of the sand? You mine it offshore?
Yes, sir.
So it's like a hydraulic dredge in?
It's a hopper dredge. It's a ship that sails about seven miles offshore, and then sucks the material up off the bottom into the ship, and then sails back in, connects to a pipeline, and pumps it on the beach. Same thing we do at the Oceanfront. Barbara, then John Moss?
Oh, I thought you did, I'm sorry. Okay. I would just like to say that this is, you said wildly successful. Yes, it is. And the very fact of the way that it's done is just, I hate the word amazing, but it's amazing. And, you know, when this is over five miles of beach, I mean, this isn't just a little area, this is over five miles of beach. And the way this whole project came about is such a story.
The people's...
I know a couple of months ago, when I was making a presentation to the Civic League, and I pulled my, my Sandbridge pile and started reading what happened in the late '80s and in the early '90s, it's just an unbelievable account...
Yes.
...of how this was put together. And it was, it was done by the citizens, by the residents of Sandbridge, many of whom still live there. It was their persistence that, that really brought this to be, you know, once we identified a source, which was certainly important, and then to figure out how to do this, developing the SSD, all that went through, it's really, I started trying to compile it. I think we really need to compile the record. You know, I've got my perspective, staff perspective, I guess the Colonel has the Corps perspective, the citizens' perspective of putting this project together is something that would make a tremendous account for anybody.
I'll take that on as a challenge. I owe my, my friends at American Shore and Beach a technical presentation, and I think the story of how this project came about, finances is critical. I think a lot of our neighboring cities or cities of our type don't realize that, that we funded this with a special service district and a TIF.
Well, of course, you know, we started out, this SSD didn't look like it was going to begin to cover it. Then, you know, of course, we created the TIF as a backup, but it's been so successful, you know, the SSD is, is definitely covering it. But so much went into all of this, and of course, to start out, it was supposed to have been a 65 federal, 35% local.
Yep.
And of course, you know, the federal lasted through one, one replenishment, and the very fact that we're able to do this totally with local is just an unbelievable accomplishment.
Yeah, it is.
And, and they, and we have been able to stay true to the promise to the residents that we would maintain enough to do an emergency if necessary. And I can tell you, they're very, very cognizant of what's in that fund, and how the money is spent, and it can only be spent for beach management things, and they, we're dag-on sure that that's what we do. But the whole project is such a, it will really make a great account, and we'll work on that.
Okay.
But, but the citizens did this. It was their perseverance and their willingness to, you know, sign those easement requirements and all the legal that went into it, and...
And some people didn't wanna sign them.
Oh, it was, it was quite a, it was quite a long process, but here we are 20 years later, and getting ready to do this other one. And the very fact that we're able to do this is just off the charts. And, and it, but it goes back to those, I wouldn't begin to start naming them, because I'd leave some out, but those folks really worked at it, and it was, you know, it was because it was their, their home, their residence, and it meant so much to them, and it still does. So we have to give the credit to, to them, because that's where it belongs.
Been lucky to be along with the... What was the guy from Duke who said we were throwing away?
Orin Pilkey.
Orin Pilkey.
Friend, actually.
Old Dominion said, "Do it," and Duke said, "Not to do it," right?
Correct. Yeah, there was all kinds of fun.
Shows you that security at Old Dominion. Okay, all right. Thank you, Phil.
Thank you.
Good job, Phil. Thanks, Dan, Tim.
Owls Creek Redevelopment, Ron Williams.
Yes, sir. I'll just introduce this. You have, under your planning agenda items this evening, item number eight, a conditional zoning request. This is related to an economic development announcement that was made this morning. Ray White's gonna brief it. We have called this project green, and now we would like to describe the project to you, so you understand the economic development opportunity, but also what's entailed in the conditional zoning.
And while he's standing up, I will note for the council that there is an updated or new disclosure statement at each of your places that is in addition to the one that was contained in your package.
We welcome you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, and members of council. It was a great event this morning, and thank those who had an opportunity to come. The governor made the announcement on our project, Owls Creek Project. It's 69 acres is inside the red outline space where they'll be going. 30 of that acres is developable for their 500,000-square-foot facility. As you know, it's the former golf course. We worked with the Navy on this. It does have APZ-2 easement, and we received compliance from them in August 24th. Also, this is a federal hub zone, and just wanna make sure that it's, this particular process, the federal government set up, it's not a city hub zone. Just wanna make sure that you're aware of the hub zone particular program. And one of the benefits is that if they apply and accepted for that program, 35% of the employees would have to live in a hub zone area. So hub, hub zone is a underutilized business zone, and we are fortunate to have the largest one in this part of the city, and another smaller one in the Green Run area. GTS, Global Technical Systems, is the name of the company. They are a local company that was founded here in Virginia Beach in 1997, homegrown. Their headquarters, where we had the event this morning, is right across from Lynn Haven Mall at 784 Lynn Haven Parkway. They also have offices in Florida, California, Northern Virginia. And basically, what they've been doing most of their career is doing a lot of government-related work, in engineering, high-tech products, software, hardware, Homeland Security they've worked with. But with this project, they'll be moving more into the commercial realm with their exciting product that really has global applications. What they'll mainly be manufacturing there is electromechanical batteries. Now, you think of a battery, you think of chemical elements within it, but this does not have chemicals within it. What it is, it's a system of magnets and flywheels. And basically, with the energy that goes into it, it stores it for an unlimited period of time. And actually, when you utilize the system, it's a cleaner form of energy than it was actually when it went into that particular system. It's 94% efficient, and it's a completely green product, something, again, that's gonna really change the world that we live in by various uses of this particular product. This is just a sketch of it, where you see, again, the magnets, the flywheel, and it's all in a self-contained system, so there's, you know, no danger outside that system since it's all enclosed. And it's something they've been working, working on for over a decade with some of the top scientists in the world. Wanted to point out that the Owls Creek area where the gold star is there is in our comprehensive plan use, is a special economic development growth area. So this type of project is set up specifically due to the process we went through with council, with the residents, with other folks in the community, and meets the requirements of that particular zone. The project itself, as I mentioned, is 500,000 square feet. In it, they will be mainly producing these electromechanical batteries. Carbon fiber is a big part of it. They are the world leader in carbon fiber technology. So they'll be able to actually attract interest from all over the world in what they're doing, and the applications for other products are just tremendous. The capital investment of this project is $54.7 million. As you can see, over $27 million will be directly in the real estate, furniture, fixtures, and equipment of another $6.2 million, and machinery and tools. A lot of the machinery and tools that they'll be using in there, they've actually developed themselves. It's not made anywhere throughout the world. So they designed and will be, have manufactured this particular equipment for them. The 1,100 jobs is just tremendous for our community, especially at $74,000 per job. High-tech, clean tech, green jobs, and the C-Tech community... High-tech, clean tech, green jobs in the C-TAC community. I see Gary McCullum here today, thank you for coming, sir, is basically gonna be a key element. We're gonna reach out to the community, we're gonna train the community to get them employed right across the street at this fine facility, again, with some good paying jobs. Here's a picture, a drawing of what the facility would look like. As you can see, they're, they really focus on leaving a lot of it green space, as much green space as possible, the water features there. Part of the golf course they're gonna leave in a natural state also. In a key you'll see from the next picture is the buffer up front. We've met with the residents, which I'll talk to you a little bit more about in a moment, but one of the key elements they wanted was some nice landscaping in front and that's certainly something that the company would be glad to do. Our updates and next steps, as I mentioned, we met with the community on October ninth and October fifteenth. Some of the issues they addressed at those meetings were traffic, noise, landscaping. Wanted to know more about the hub zone and the workforce development through both of the meetings and through documentation, both from various departments here in the city and from the hub zone folks, we answered those. The next step is later tonight, you'll be asked to consider rezoning of the property to I-1. Then on December twelfth meeting, we'd like to ask you to transfer the land to the Development Authority. From there, the purchase agreement approval and EDIP grant, we announced today that the authority will be putting in one point eight million dollars to get this project going. And the state, the governor announced through his Commonwealth Opportunity Fund, he would match that. Not only that, there's other state incentives that will be involved here, over seven million dollars worth. So something that's keeping this here in Virginia Beach and the Commonwealth of Virginia and making sure we're not letting this get away to other states that would certainly love to have a state-of-the-art project like this one. Their projected start date is later in January and March nineteenth, they hope to be operational. Be glad to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you for the presentation, just for your information, council, in the formal session, I will turn the meeting over to Mr. Jones. I hope you see that there wasn't any documentation representing Town Bank and what was presented, the city attorney did some extra hard work and found out Town Bank was involved, so I'll turn it over to the Vice Mayor. Barbara?
It sounds, it's a wonderful project and so forth, but the damper on it all is all of the news reports last night and this morning, the local news reports, because we apparently missed some of the neighbors in working with them before and all I heard in watching the news was over and over again the neighborhood opposition of the immediate neighbors across the street. I hope we are going to go back and work with these people and answer their questions or somehow or other they were missed, because everything that I heard in watching the news last night and this morning was negative about this project and it's unfortunate that a group of people were apparently overlooked.
Quite a few of those did attend the second meeting that was held. Again, they voiced their concerns, a lot of them, as you saw from the news reports, wanted to keep the area in a natural state. And, but again, we looked at the comprehensive plan, saw what the community at large through various public sessions decided doing, that property would be the best use, so we followed that particular guideline in doing this. We also met with the leadership of C-TAC. We met with over a dozen of the pastors in the area who took back to their congregations this particular project and the elements of it. But certainly to answer your concern, we would welcome and I think this is an opportunity for us not only to reach out to them on this particular project, but for other things too. And I think it's been very receptive so far and we certainly look forward to continuing that dialogue and build that relationship with the C-TAC community.
John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I think it's good to kind of piggyback with what Barbara had to say. I think part of what was missing in this presentation and probably and certainly has been missed in what we've seen with the media is that when the Owls Creek Golf Course no longer was viable and that lease was terminated, the Economic Development Department actually went out with a formal RFP to come up with some other type of recreational use for the project. And that went out, I think they received four responses, none of which were viable really for that property. So, you know, this was not the first thing that was done there and a lot of the things that people have asked for, we did research and look for and weren't able to come up with anything that would be viable there. And I think that that might be important, I'm sure that we'll probably have speakers and it won't be on the consent agenda tonight because of that, but it may be good for someone from Economic Development to actually discuss that process and let everyone know that we did actually go out and try and do something that was probably more of what it is that some of those residents wanted to see.
Yes, indeed we did and C-TAC, Mr. McCullum representing the community, was part of that process too. And we evaluated, it was either three or four of the proposals and again, none of them really complied. A lot of them didn't even meet the Navy regulation due to their restrictions there, so.
Thank you, Mr. Moss.
People did reach out, even though I was in Georgia over the weekend, about the project, but, you know, how often do communities get to get eleven hundred jobs that pays this kind of money? And when you look at the amount of tax subsidies we have provided for basically retail minimum wage jobs, will exceed any incentives we are offering for this project. You know, this is, and it's also STEM jobs. This is not legacy economy jobs. This is new economy jobs. And there will be other things that come with it because of the subcontracting support that they will require, as all these people do. So this is, when you look at the return on investment, like I said many times, I'd take ten of these over, one of these over a dump site any day. So this is a good project for the city as a whole. And maybe there were some other uses, I would suggest they couldn't effectively compete with what this offers just our residents in terms of their own personal prosperity and in terms of return on investment. This is, I hope we can get a lot more home runs like this, this is a good project.
We're working hard on others. Bobby?
And, you know, just to add on to what John said, I think what's gonna happen, I'm just delighted that you reached out to the Adjacent Committee for Employment on this. I think that's the type of outreach and that collaborative spirit that really makes this a win-win, that, you know, once this is built and operating, people are gonna reflect back and say, boy, we really made the right decision.
Very good, any other questions or comments? Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Ray, you can be here six.
I think they like to have some more presentations like that.
I come in extra.
Okay, City Council Liaison Reports, did we have any? I'll move on. City Council Comments, Bobby?
Yeah, I just wanted to give a shout out to Tom Leahy and his crew last night. They had the Kempsville High School, the meetings, the public meetings on the flood mitigation and, you know, what the city's doing. It was a great presentation, it was a, it was, you know, the community, I think, was really engaged on that and really appreciated what the city did. And, you know, I encourage people to, you know, the community, come to these meetings. They are very fruitful, they provided a lot of information and I think it's good that, once again, when we have projects even like this, the public outreach is the way to go to really pave the, you know, the way to success on some of these projects going forward.
John Moss and then Barbara.
Two things, one, we maybe call back when we got the brief from the Economic Development Authority and I asked a question about putting that on web stream or on TV just like the rest of our commissions do. They were very amenable to that, they just not had the technology ability to do that. So I would hope when we look at the budget process that comes up for the Economic Development Department, that we look at a way to, even if it's just webcast versus channel forty-eight to cut the cost down, find a way to be able to put those things out in the public medium like all our other governing boards are available, do something. And secondly, I'd like to remind people that tomorrow night at Cox High School is the second of the sea level rise, public hearing, I think it's six o'clock, right? Six to eight, so I encourage people to go to that. In fact, I, because those listening, I canceled my town hall on that night, which was one so that people, because it was about flooding in person. But I do encourage people to show up and participate and those and make their thoughts known. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Barbara.
Well, for the past few weeks, I've had the opportunity to be a part of the Training for a CERT team, the Community Emergency Response Team, and we did the practical Saturday morning over at the Bird Neck Fire Training Center. And this program is just so impressive. It's the opportunity for individual citizens to understand and to know all that goes on with our emergency response. And it's just a phenomenal program and I just would encourage as many people as can to take a part. And for the rest of you folks here on the council, the next class begins January eighteenth. But it's the opportunity for those of us who are laypeople to really get to understand and to have a little teeny tiny part in all that goes into preparation for emergencies, particularly these storms that we've been having and so forth. And just having this information and knowledge is just a great benefit. But also over there at Bird Neck Saturday morning, happened to be the annual meeting of the FEMA team. And seeing those folks, I just have the greatest admiration for those folks. And we are just so fortunate to be able to have them as a part of our response. People as well as other cities and the technical, the training that they have is just so tremendous. I think we are really fortunate that we're able to support them and just being there at the same place with them made me feel pretty awestruck to think that they have the kind of training that they have and what our citizens have because they have this kind of training. We've got some good folks out there protecting us.
Bobby Lucky, Shannon?
Yes, Rosemary and I last week had the privilege of joining the Chamber of Commerce on the regional visit to Nashville. And it was quite an eye-opener and quite exciting to see the things that are happening in Nashville in such a short amount of time. One of their things was, fortunately, unfortunately, game changer was the arena that they had built with just a lot of political will, if you will, to make it happen and they did it without a team and they had three years of that before they got their team. And they all attest it to the arena being their, I know, I know, their catalyst for change, but, you know, a lot's happening in that city and a lot's happened in the past twenty years and they've, they've got, I think, a two point two percent unemployment rate, which is great. However, they have so many jobs coming to the city every day that, you know, there's that fine balance of you have enough jobs coming in and enough employees to fill them. So I look at that and think, you know what, we've got the employees here, let's bring the jobs in, we can make that happen. You know, and at the end of the day, we look back and we see all the wonderful things happening and a lot of it they tout to, to regionalism or combined city-county government, where I guess years ago we all segregated and became our own cities and they decided to bunker down and have their city-county combined government to have a larger MSA and to have more economies of scale. And so they tout a lot of their successes to that. But at the end of the day, I look back and I'm really glad to come home to Virginia Beach because we really are the greatest city in the world. And it's, and we had a debriefing with all of the chamber members as we sat around the table and one of the guys spoke up, he goes, you know what, I love this too, but I'm ready to go home. I really love where I live, I really love Hampton Roads and I think everyone at that table agreed that we really are proud of where we live and where we are as a region. And we, I think there's a few things I'll share with the city manager of things that we learned and I think we can tweak here locally and maybe glean some of that. But thank you for sending me and they do, they too have a transportation problem. Coming up in May for their election, they have a five billion dollar referendum on the ballot on transportation and a whole package of light rail, bus rapid transit, the whole gamut. And they have much the same debate that we have here in the public of yes or no, a thumbs up or thumbs down, but they have a five billion dollar proposal out there. And that's really just for Nashville and I think it's Martin County, I think that was the county's name, that doesn't count the other six or seven counties around there that are watching and getting ready to jump on board for a referendum should this one pass. So, you know, I see a lot of similarities with what we've gone through or currently going through and, you know, what they're going through as well.
Great, thank you for them, but anybody else? I've got one thing, in church on Sunday, this lady comes up to me during the service, you know, and she said, I just want to tell you, I went to the Wave Church and saw the active shooter. I don't know what you would call it, but she thought she would be going for thirty minutes and she was there, I guess, for four hours. And I'm telling you, Dave, she said we should take that thing national, that she's never seen anything like it in her life and she'd never been more proud to be a citizen of Virginia Beach when the police department did a heck of a job.
Yes, sir, I'll just amplify your comments. The police department has, they've got an act. They've got, they take the most serious of conditions and set just absolutely, they bring you to a screeching halt with the drama that has occurred across the nation and internationally over the last five years and then they turn it around and make it an enlightening, enjoyable. They have an officer that is, and he's a member of the Wave Church, so he put on an extra flair in front of all his homies there. And I tell you what, I was in stitches, I was watching folks watching it, they were engaged. This is not about getting scared or, it's about common sense and they make it enjoyable and he puts humor to it. And when he parades out, you know, when T-Rex comes in the door with holding a pistol and he's dragging his tongue, he's looking you right in the eye and you don't know whether you're gonna live or die, he can turn that into one of the most enjoyable confrontations you'll ever see. But it's to awaken the public's insights that they already understand to flee, fight, to flee, hide, fight. And it is a concept that they are presenting and we had other police departments from regional jurisdictions there and they were taking copious notice, so you should be very proud of your police department.
I'm glad I brought it up because, that's my pleasure. Okay, let's see how good the Vice Mayor is today on ordinances and resolutions, anybody have any comments?
I do. This is Mr. Senator on four A. Talking about in the notes that there was still, there was still a ten million dollars before this, two million dollars unfunded on that road. Is it your intention in the CIP coming up that you will be recommending to fully fund that road and fill in that gap of the eight million dollar difference?
You're talking about Sambridge, Sambridge NMO seven A. Yes, ma'am, yes, sir, yes, sir. It currently resides as a top priority unfunded project, so.
You are gonna fill that in as a programmed road project?
I have not done all the work on our CIP, but yeah, that is my intent.
Okay, so everything's consented?
I have a lot of oversight on that.
All right, everything's consent on ordinances, let's do planning, please.
Planning, Elite Therapies, Inc., Rose Hall Shops, Associate Beach District.
John?
No issues, Mr. Vice Mayor, consent, please.
Two, New Singular Wireless PCS, Jacobs Telecommunications, Amaco Maple Bay Beach District, John?
No issues again, Mr. Vice Mayor, consent, please.
Three, McNeil Properties LLC and Reed Enterprises, Inc., Princess Anne, Ms. Henley?
Well, three and four are kind of related and they're both fine, I think it's just a.
All right, we'll skip to five. Item five, Spence Crossing Properties, Centerville, Bob?
I think they wanted a deferment on that. With regarding Mrs. Henley's concern about the fifty-foot, they wanted to go ahead and, you know, resubmit.
That's good, thank you.
All right, I have a letter. I think it's six, Baker Villas LLC and Ocean Rental Properties, Kempsville. Yes, okay?
I'm abstaining on that.
I got you.
Thank you.
Seven, Goodwill of Central and Coastal Virginia, Inc. and Southern Bank, Lynn Haven, yeah.
Owls Creek.
Eight, city conditional changes zoning, I-1 and R dash two point five, South Bird Neck Road, do we have speakers?
One.
We have one?
I think there'll be more for it over.
Item nine, ordinance to.
Item nine, ordinance to amend and reorganize appendix one, oceanfront resort district form-based code, city zoning ordinance. Everybody okay? Yep. Okay.
Ten, ordinance to adopt and incorporate into the 2016 conference plan, buy be creative
district connectivity and so forth. Everybody okay? Yep. And 11 ordinance to amend sections one, 11, 203, city ordinance, redefinition of municipal oceanfront entertainment venue and delete the requirement of 10-year shared parking agreements. Consent.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, just on, on 9, 10, 11, I'd like to thank the planning staff. I mean, they worked really, really hard to get these overs done, particularly Ashby Moss, so. Good job.
I would dit of that. I read through all that stuff on my trip. And that's a lot of, you could tell there's a lot of work in that content.
They did a nice job. Well, pass that on, sir. Pass that on. Ma'am?
I just. I echo that. Just a question. On our moving January 2nd to January 9th, will the next meeting, the third Tuesday in January, still be a voting meeting, or are we moving everything? We're just, so we'll have, the voting meetings will be the second and third?
Yes, ma'am.
I was thinking of that short-term rental thing that's coming forward. So we'll have the public hearing on the 9th, and then the vote on the next.
That's what I asked when it came up. That's, we got, they fixed that.
Just so we are telling people the right dates that you'll be considering.
Okay, the chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to exemptions from open meetings allowed by section 2.2-3711A, code of Virginia, intended for the following purposes: publicly held property, discussion or consideration of acquisition of real property for the public purpose, or of disposition of publicly held property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to section 2.2-3711A3, Bayside District, public contract discussion, award of a public contract involving the expenditure of public funds, and discussion of the terms or scope of such contract, where discussion in an open section would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to section 2.2-3711A29, peer project. Legal matters, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring a provision of legal advice by such counsel pursuant to section 2.2-3711A7, Norfolk Southern Rightway. Personnel matters, discussion, consideration, or interviews and prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance to motion, salaries, disciplining, and resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body pursuant to section 2.2-3711A1. Counsel appointments, council boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies, and appointees, evaluation of the council appointees. Do I have a motion?
So moves.
Second.
I have a motion. Second, call the roll, please.
Mrs. Abbott?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Dyer?
Aye.
Mrs. Henley?
Aye.
Mrs. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Moss? Aye.
Mr. Earn?
Aye.
Mr. Wood?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Aye, and we're going to.